Evening Nottingham, it's 9:30. I'd like to call this meeting to order, starting with the Pledge of Leadens.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As a reminder, folks, if any of you have not signed in, there's a sheet back there that you'll need to sign in. Your full name and address would be very well welcomed. Real quick, the parade was a success this weekend. Thank you to the Rec. Department for putting that together. And thank you for the Fire Department for bringing Santa Claus around. The town greatly appreciated that. So, without further ado, we'll go right into the manifests. Everybody had an opportunity to look them over?
There aren't any.
I'm sorry? Oh, there should have been an email. You didn't get them in the mail?
No, there aren't any for this week.
No, there was not, because it was last week.
Last week.
All right, oh, that little week behind, sorry. Minutes, 11:06 and 11:27. Looks like the changes have already been, a lot of them have already been made. I didn't see anything else. Did you? Steve?
Looked good to me.
I make a motion to approve the public minutes for November 6th, 2023, and November 27th, 2023, as amended.
I'll second that.
Our motion made by Tim Davrio, seconded by Steve Welch. Roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Moore.
Aye, Ben Barlett.
Aye, Tim Davrio.
We don't have any non-public. Where, I didn't see that. Okay. Yep. Yeah.
I make a motion to approve the non-public minutes from November 27th.
Second?
Okay, motion made by Tim Davrio, seconded by Steve Welch. Roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Moore.
Aye, Ben Barlett.
Aye, Tim Davrio.
Okay. Now we can move on to signed boards and committees. Budget?
Planning Board has a meeting tomorrow, Wednesday night.
Okay. Budget Committee is well into the process. I think we've heard all of the proposed budgets, and we'll get working on that.
Okay. CIP?
We have our next meeting next week. We'll be getting on the requests from the department heads, getting those to...
It doesn't appear that there will be any, as of right now.
Okay, okay. So, we'll be meeting next week.
All right, Marston?
I had sent out an email before our last meeting, which was canceled, but we had a tractor that was stolen two weeks ago from the facilities.
Okay.
And the Nottingham Police Department very quickly reacted, and somebody ended up turning themselves in, well, turning the tractor in that was mistakenly taken from the property.
So you recovered it. Any damage?
No damage.
Awesome, great.
And it's now under locking key at the post.
That's good.
Did you get a roof on the...
We've got two roofs, and two to go.
Okay.
Everybody got sick.
You started something.
I did. No, I think somebody gave it to me.
Okay. There's nothing else on Marston? Town Administrator report?
Okay. We had a rental storage and office container placed at the highway garage. This will give some additional storage, as well as a break room area for the staff to recuperate during the winter season. It's a temporary solution until we're able to really get into the facilities committee report and figure out priority for the highway garage and what the future of that is. So, the container rental's $400 a month. And, as I said, it's a short-term solution for space needs. We're able to relocate everything that was stored at the old fire station over to the highway garage by moving stuff around and getting some supplies and stuff moved into the storage containers. It's very much a work in progress. It was just delivered last Tuesday, so we'll see how that works out. And if it doesn't, it's a rental and can go away.
Do they need furniture for it?
Yes. Yes, preferably, you know, maybe a couch or recliners. We have some cots out back that they might be able to utilize, just for a quick nap or rest. But other than that, they have, you know, a small refrigerator and a microwave that they're going to be moving over from the garage.
And this is just so it separates them from the vehicles and stuff that's in the garage?
Correct.
Because they are exposed to, you know, fumes, toxic stuff that comes off the vehicles and stuff, so... Yeah, temporary fixed.
The new ambulance is scheduled for delivery this week. I don't have any further update. That was a message that I got last week, so I don't have a date specific as to when it will be delivered, but we will be hopeful that it shows up. The police department's in the process of obtaining their state accreditation. And in doing so, they had a facility inspection completed in early October. The inspection noted that there are significant liability issues, safety and privacy with anyone other than police personnel accessing the right side of the department, the right side of the police department, pretty much that side parking lot that's signed for authorized access only. This was also a noted safety concern when we had our joint loss safety management committee meeting back in the spring, just because if the cruisers are coming in and out, responding to a call or what have you, really, nobody should be out there walking around. So, it was one of the deficiencies that we noted at that time. The state accreditation inspection kind of recertified that concern. So, I've designated the side access door to the food pantry as an emergency exit only, and let Shelley know. So this does create some challenges with the commodities delivery. That was an access door that they were using quite a bit. So, what that means is everything has to come through the front door now. It takes a little bit more handling. So, I've created a challenge for the food pantry, and I honestly don't want to, you know, stop the service that they provide to the community, but it is one of the struggles that we're having with this building and the location. And I just want to start the conversation. I asked Shelley to attend tonight so she can be here to kind of recap on it, what it does for her, and just to start the conversation. Maybe we can come up with a solution collectively together.
You want to discuss that now, or do you want to just move on with your report and come back to that?
If you'd like me to do that, we can do that.
Yeah, why don't you...
We have time. Our seven o'clock canceled, so...
Yeah, okay, so why don't we finish out your report, and then we'll come back to...
Okay. So, moving on, the date for the presidential primary election's been scheduled for Tuesday, January 23rd. I've been in contact with the school to make the necessary provisions to use the school as a polling location. We do expect that it's going to be a very well-attended election, so that seems to be the best location. Unless you tell me otherwise. The town deliberative session can take place no sooner than February 3rd, 2024, and no later than February 10th. So I'm going to propose that we schedule it for February 3rd with an inclement weather date of February 10th. Does that work for you?
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay. And just for informational purposes, we've had some missed meetings. Health Trust approved the rates for the 2024 renewal period, and I just, I had to acknowledge that we were going to be moving forward with Health Trust. Obviously, we didn't put out the health insurance rates for, to see if there was any other options out there for this year, so with time being of the essence, I've already sent the rate approval back in. Medical rates are subject to increase by 15.6%, dental by 4.7%. And the short-term disability is going down by 1.3%. Long-term disability and life insurance coverage by 15%. I think I had stated it in maybe this meeting or a budget committee meeting. With the health insurance rate, they seem to be on like a five-year trending period. So you'll see one year where you have a significant increase. We're in a small risk pool with other municipalities, so we're able to take advantage of some really competitive rates for premium health insurance plans. But, like I said, I mean, you'll have one year where you'll see a significant increase between like 12 and 15%. In the next two years, we might see it go down seven. So this is, this is the gamble that we play. But all in all, it's some of the best insurance rates out there for municipalities. Moving on forward, the school's annual financial report, their MS-25, was finalized on 11/16. It was one of the things that was delaying us in the process for setting the town's tax rate. Upon review of the town's MS-1, which is our summary of inventory valuation, New Hampshire Department Revenue picked up that we we had to remove the all-veterans tax credits from 37 properties that are receiving it because on the town warrant this year, somehow it was omitted. There was some language that was changed in the RSA that needed to be read adopted by each town. So, on our warrant this year, it was on there for the regular veterans credit, but we missed the all-veterans tax credit, which, so we had to have two separate warrant articles addressing both. So both Chad Roberg from Avatar and myself have been back and forth on the phone with the Department of Revenue pretty much all summer, trying to figure out what the solution was for this. And we're not the only town that did it. There were several towns that missed it. Some held a special town meeting. We did not, in light of special election and other things that we already had going on in town. So, our corrective measure is that we are going to put on a warrant article to read adopt in 2024. But what happens is because we didn't do it, it affects the 2023 tax share. So, I've been back and forth with the attorney, got a legal opinion. Technically, you as a Board of Selectmen can abate for "good cause," quote-unquote, and determining good cause. Usually, it's a measure of determining hardship or fair assessment across the board. I think in this instance, and our attorney agrees, that good cause is the fact that we are negligent in re-adopting the credit. Therefore, these veterans who are probably the most deserving of any to receive this credit are going to be subjected to a $750 additional tax when the tax bills come out. So, you having the right to abate, that is the process that I would like to put forward. We've kind of discussed it in prior meetings. And so, anybody that's affected by receiving the all-veterans tax credit, if, I'd just like to put it out there, if they could just send an email or just give me a phone call and let me know how that might impact them, that will further justify your ability to abate, if you so choose.
Okay. Now, I was just curious, the number of properties, I thought it was 39. Is it 37?
Well, there was 30, there's, there's 37 property owners, or there's 37 properties affected. When I did my initial count, some people own multiple properties, but the credit can only be extended to their primary residence, so...
Right, that makes sense.
But it is, it's 37 property owners receiving a $750 tax credit, so we're talking almost $30,000.
Okay.
So I'll be putting that forward to you, and I'm hoping that some people will reach out just to support our efforts. And just an update on 91A request for information. I just did a quick computation, and since May of this year, we've had over 50 requests for, under RSA 91A, for a request for information. And it's been anything from copies of minutes to more voluminous records requests. There's been a countless number of hours of review and redaction, multiple rooms of paper of documentation produced, and we've recently purchased some PDF editing software to assist with the process. We've also had some challenges with RSA 91A4, which only requires the town to provide access to documents for inspection and copying during regular business hours and at the regular business premises. We have made some exceptions to reproduce records in an electronic format and supply them without, without physical inspection. It's not really conducive to workflow of our small office. It's creating delays in fulfilling the requests. So, you know, it's one of those things where you try to make as much of the information available. So the stuff that is available readily without requiring any review or redaction is made pretty much available by our website. We have a lot of information that can be found there. But there are special requests that often do take some additional review, so...
Does this require maybe an amendment to a policy or something?
Well, we don't currently have a policy. What we do is we follow 91A. We follow the statute and the guidance that's been provided to us through that, and additional guidance that's been given to us by New Hampshire Municipal Association, training and the such. So, what I would like to do is try to implement a policy so it can better streamline the, not only the request, but the fulfillment process, so people can better understand how it, how it works and what their expectations are.
Okay. Are you going to draft something up?
I will happily draft something up. And then, moving forward with more policy conversation. My predecessor, the interim Town Administrator, had put a stop to private rental of the town facilities just for liability issues. And there was, there was really question of whether the town should get into the rental business. So he had put a stop to it. I do have a request outstanding right now for use of multiple facilities, starting in January, for a private event, more or less. So the question is, is do we want to reconsider the use of this building and possibly an adjustment? Presently, according to the policy that's still in place, we have a rental fee of $50, which, you know, for a pretty basic event is one thing, but if you get into, you know, a private birthday party with additional cleaning, the question is, is whether or not that's sufficient. And we also have the challenge of trying to work around the other recreation and community events that are already being held in our spaces. So I just wanted to bring that back up. We had touched on it quite a bit for our policies workshop. But if, if you want to continue on with the no subletting or possibility, I can put it on as an agenda item for maybe the next meeting.
Yeah, why don't we do that? Gives us some time to think about it, and then we can go from there.
You said it's for use of multiple zones or multiple days?
Well, it's primarily the community center, and then possibly like the parking lot over at the old fire station and Old Town Hall.
So it's a pretty big event?
Well, it's multiple. It's a training session for a dog show.
Oh, we're talking about heavy traffic in an already fragile building. So, yeah, that's something we've probably discussed more.
And it was also the reason why is our septic system at the time of when we stopped the events was not up to where it is today.
Yeah.
So we did have a whole little issue.
Was that here or at the Old Town Hall?
Here, it was here.
Yeah.
That was, that was for the whole town we stopped. It wasn't just for a particular building.
Yeah, I think that was completed just before you started.
Because we had people that rented out birthday parties for the kitchen and stuff like that. And that's because, again, the septic wasn't working up to par. It wasn't something that we thought was, that was part of one of our discussions of why not...
And it is now?
Yeah, we dug up the whole thing and redid it, yeah.
Okay.
The only thing I want to caution on is I don't feel comfortable leasing this building out for any events if we still have a rodent issue, if we still do. Slowly getting it corrected, but we still have a problem.
All to be discussed at the next meeting.
Correct. Yeah, all right, so, is that it?
The, the only other thing that's not on my report that I just wanted to give you an update on is we had some issues with the well over at the recycling center. I called a few well companies today because at, at one point, we had no water over there on Friday, and we thought it was resulting from some work that had been done around, some site work that had been done outside. Fortunately, COMAC came out today, and they found that there was a pre-filter before it got to the well pump that was extremely clogged up with sediment, and that was the reason why the water was not pumping into the building. So, very fortunate there, so we will have a maintenance repair for that. But the water is back up and running at the recycling center, so it was down for a short period of time. We do have, the, the well casing is plastic. It's actually PVC pipe. I think it's probably subsurface, and it was extended above grade with the plastic PVC pipe. So that is broken off and uncapped at present, so we need to get that repaired. That's going to be a separate portion.
Are they going to give you a price?
Yes.
So, no drilling?
No, not as of yet.
Good.
There is still water pumping into the recycling centers, so they have their the restroom facilities, correct. And then there was just some general correspondence that's come in over the past couple of weeks that I've included here to see if you need to respond or not.
This person isn't here tonight to address this? Anybody have any questions or comments in regards to that? Steve?
No.
Tim?
No.
None of you boys prepared to make a statement just yet? However, I will say that it's hard to judge tone through emails. So, in regards to that one pertaining to you, we'll review it and come back to it. Anything else?
Just back to Shelley.
All right, Shelley. Let me state your name, address.
Shelley Tennesse, 17 Robin Hood Drive. So you want me to explain my part of this whole thing?
Go through the whole thing, so that the town, everyone at home is aware of the situation and so on.
Okay. So, the food pantry is located in the town offices. We have a door that goes out the back that we have been using since the late 1990s for the food pantry. We have volunteers that I have over 30, and three are under 60. We use that back entrance for our government food that comes, it was coming every other month, sometimes now it comes every month. We have Market Basket. We order food through them. We use the back for that, and we do that once, maybe twice a month. Three times a year, we use the back of that building for turkeys, hams, for Easter, Thanksgiving, and Christmas, that we leave out back the night before. And I do understand about the rodent problem now. But we've always left them out there the night before, so that we have them that following day. Turkeys are frozen, hams are not, but it's cold enough. So, now we're asked not to use that part of the building. Out of food pantry money, we have built a roof over that area that we come into, so that it's easier for us as far as ice damage and just ice in general, or rain. Electrical, we've done all of that inside that building, inside that area there, including the outside, which is now changed, but it was different.
Outside what? Lighting what?
Huh? The lighting outside of the back, the back of the building. So the problem came when, this year, when they were looking to credential, right?
Correct.
The credential of the police, of the police department. You can tell me yes or no, but I don't think they're going to get their credential in this building. But that's okay, whatever. I don't think they will.
Okay.
But the fact of it is, is that I have asked them if they could help us. It happened Thanksgiving was when I fir-, okay, so Thanksgiving and Christmas for me is very busy times. Right now, since the last time I met with you, three weeks ago, our numbers have gone up even more. So we're at 35 people, 35 families right now that we're serving. So to have people come in this side of the building, like we did today, number one, okay, you've got, it's a business here. So, we've got people coming in with carriages, with all this food. So I'm having people that are in their 70s taking stuff out of a truck, putting it into a carriage, bringing it all the way down the hallway, now having to take it out again to put it into that room. It's a lot. So Thanksgiving came, and I couldn't put the turkeys out back there, out in the back, that we normally do. We open up the door, and then when clients come in, we take turkeys and we put them on their carriages. So we couldn't do that. So the alternative, and I brought it up to Ellen, was either put my van back there, or I can use the recreation van to put all the turkeys into, so that they're not out there for the rodents. So we thought that was, we thought that was an okay thing to do and have it. And I need for all of you to come see the pantry and see how we're set up back there, because I don't think a lot of you have been in there. So the back door to the pantry is here, and there's a parking space right here. And I wanted the van to be right there, so that we can easily just go in and out to get the turkeys. Well, I think it was the day before, they went to use the van, a mouse came out of the van. And there was mouse, mouse poops around there. So that wasn't an option to be able, they didn't want to use that. So I said, okay. The alternative was, I think, Matt, did Matt, or did you ask Matt, or didn't Matt?
I asked. We were looking for a pickup truck. It was probably about 5:30 the night before the turkeys were, actually, the turkeys were supposed to be delivered that night. They were delayed until the next morning, so... I had asked Matt if we could use the utility truck for the day, since they would be here for the blood drive anyways.
So we had the utility truck. So I was fine with that. That's fine, to put the turkeys in. But then we weren't allowed to put it in the back. We had to leave the utility truck in the front of the town office. So Mike came in to talk to us about that, to talk to me about that, and said, all you have to do, just have the clients take the turkeys themselves off the utility truck. Well, we've already had problems, haven't we, with having stuff damaged supposedly? So I wasn't going to have clients be taking, and elderly people, taking their turkeys off of that truck out there. So the truck was left out there, and we just took, I had somebody stand, I had somebody get up on the truck to get some of the turkeys out, so that we could bring the turkeys into the food pantry. And we just did that. But that night, I needed help with also getting the turkeys out of there. So we left it there for the day, but it was in the sun, so I had somebody move the truck. I wasn't going to move it, so I had somebody turn it the other way. And then we took the rest of the turkeys off that night. Now I've got Christmas.
Well, so it sounds to me you want the reuse of that door restored.
I want the use of the back again. And I explained that to them. I said, I can let you know what days it is. It's always the first Thursday of the month for the government food that comes. I have two gentlemen that are seventy that do that and bring it in. And I asked them if they could do that.
Shelley, thank you for what you do for the town, by the way. You have a very important program and, you know, we as a board, we do support it. However, you know, there is safety concerns with that rear door. You know, with traffic, I mean, they're bringing people in and out. And I do believe the police station will get their accreditation. That being said, we got to ensure that the area out there is secure where they're bringing all kinds of, you know, traffic in and out of there. I don't want to see anybody get hit or cruises getting blocked if there's an emergency and so on.
And we've never blocked, we've never blocked one.
But how can we come up with an alternative?
Have them, have them, I can ask them on the day of
Well, what about this?
On the day of that, for one of them to be out there with us.
What about this? Would you be opposed to moving over to the old town hall?
Yes.
Why?
There's not enough room.
More privacy over there, and it does have significant room in the hall there. Probably just as much as what you have in there.
I thought it's fallen down.
It's good enough for the SAU, we've repaired it. We can't just, we can't use the upstairs, but you can use the first floor.
I don't know. I don't know if that's an option.
It gives you your privacy over there. I mean, as you said, privacy was an issue for you. You know, people coming through the door and all that, you're going to have that over there. There is already a handicap ramp over there. You know, there'll be some adjustments we'll have to make for you to accommodate you over there. But I think that's a, you know, a reasonable compromise.
Option.
Option, compromise.
I don't know, I'll have to talk to my board about it. I don't know, it's, I would have to look and see what the room is over there.
The way I look at it, it's a win-win here. I mean, it'll freeze up the space in the back so that there's no more issues with the police department. All right, which has been identified in the facilities handbook there that they did a report on. It allows an opportunity for a space that's just sitting there to be used again and be reutilized.
But that gets used for so many other things in the community.
Not right now.
The library, how many times does the library use it?
As far as I know, they only use the lawn out front, putting a trailer with books out there.
They use the inside of that. They do use the inside.
Well, let me change. It's a suggestion and I think it's something worth looking into. I think it's something worth looking into. But again, obviously, you know.
Or if there's another solution.
Go ahead.
Or if there's another solution.
If there's another one, will the board's willing to hear it? Maybe board members have an idea?
Well, I'd like to know how far, is this the one item that holds the police from accreditation? Or is there multiple items that hold from accreditation?
It's one of a couple.
And with their--
Well, I mean, that's a time schedule thing. I mean, if they were saying this is the only thing holding us up from getting fully accredited, I think this, I mean, again, not pushing things down the road, but that's, you know, let's look at what it is for this upcoming for Christmas and just this getting--
Oh, I'm not saying we move her over there today.
No, I'm not saying move her over there, but I mean, if she might needs access up till now till Christmas is one time. And then come January first, things we start entertaining for this upcoming year.
But it's not just the accreditation that's holding this up. I mean, the accreditation just confirmed what was also brought up in our safety committee meeting. I mean, you've got a cruiser going out there, you have them coming in with a victim or somebody that's being brought in. So it's the privacy of those individuals that the police department has to handle as well. So this is just a second identification. And again, I'm not trying to say that, that that becomes more important than the service that the food pantry provides and their ability to get the commodities and everything in. But it's more than just the accreditation for the police department. It is, it's the other part that we have to look at. So it's a challenge that we hold with this building and the police department being contained within it. So is the bigger picture that we need to prioritize a different area for the police department to be located? I mean, we've done a Band-Aid approach on so much for so long, you know? Is this the next thing that we're putting a Band-Aid on?
The question I have is with confidentiality of somebody of a prisoner coming in, I'll address that one first, the confidentiality there. When somebody is bringing, and I've asked police, I've asked other police departments, when somebody's bringing in a prisoner in a cruiser, number one, they're handcuffed. Number two, they're going into, what is it, the Sally Port, is that what it's called? They're going into the Sally Port. The Sally Port has to be closed and the prisoner has to be brought into the building that way.
Not always, but yeah, that's ideally, yes.
Of what they do.
They could have a busy day and have two coming in and you'll have one cruiser sitting on the outside.
All righty, I get that. And I have not, I don't have a problem with, okay, if I tell them ahead of time, okay, the first Thursday of every month, by ten o'clock, there's a government order that comes in. If we have to postpone that coming in that back way, we are more than accommodating to that.
How long did it take you to unload the trucks?
Not even an hour. Not even an hour.
So if we load it out front and back, I mean, we're only talking a short amount of time.
To get that out.
Right.
And mostly, that's where, if that back door--
And ideally, wouldn't it be better to have the meat out front here so that these elderly people haven't got to carry their groceries?
We have somebody that helps them out with all their groceries. They push the car and somebody helps them put, all those elderly, put it in their car.
I mean, I realize the pickup wasn't probably ideal because of lifting over the side of the truck. But if we had something out here, it would probably be just easy to--
Well, that's the turkey situation, all right, so that, I mean, that's that. I'm talking about the other stuff. When you come in that back door and if you come and look in there, all our stuff is right there to be put into that next room. So there's another room that we have and all of our--
Is that in the hallway? Kind of?
Kind of, yeah. Between that hallway and there's another room that everything goes in, right there. I mean, I said to Mike, I mean, the police officer can sit there for, if they had to. I mean, I get it, it's their time too.
It's a restricted area back there. You can't just go park back there, none of us can. That being said, you know, I think we need to, you know, abide by that. I'm not, I'm not in favor of changing anything at this time. I can't speak for the rest of the board members. But if the board members want to review this later, we can. But as of right now, I support keeping that area restricted for safety reasons and so on. Steve?
I think we get through this Christmas season, we reevaluate and move forward. I mean--
Fair enough. John?
I'm with Steve.
Tim? Okay. So we'll get through this season and then we'll reevaluate after the holidays.
Meaning what?
Meaning it's areas restricted.
I can't use that back.
No.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry. We thank you for the job that you do, you do a very important job and we thank you for that.
All righty, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, action items reviewed from last meeting. Did we, where are we at with the purchase of trailer for aluminum cans?
So I requested from three different companies. One responded that they don't do them. The other one never got back to me. And then I got a quote for forty-nine hundred dollars for an aluminum trailer.
Okay.
With eight-foot sides and it has hydraulic so they could dump them at the--
Oh, good.
That seems pretty inexpensive.
Yeah.
It's aluminum. It's not, it doesn't have a steel frame.
I don't know if that, I think that might, that might be the price a little bit more for most aluminums.
I think aluminum's gone down this year.
Well, it has.
Yeah.
But with an hydraulic on it, that seems to be--
Hydraulic system, so it's not power or anything, right?
Well, I think that was the original price that we had gotten quoted.
But we were going to have to add sides to it. We were going to have to fabricate a higher side to be able to accommodate the cans.
Okay, this is eight-foot sides.
Yeah, so that, and I think that's--
And I did look at the one that's there and, because Wayne was thinking that maybe somebody could fabricate what's there and, I mean, I don't think if you fabricated that, it would be, it would--
Yeah, it's definitely outlived his expectancy.
Yes.
So will the eight-foot sides on that, will that be high enough, let's say if it's parked on the backside, there are people coming up on the--
It's going to be about the equivalent of what's there now.
I think it's, I think it might be a foot shorter, but right now you get people walking up a ramp. So you just have to either not have the ramp or--
Does it have a mesh side or is it a solid side?
It's mesh side.
Okay.
It's very similar, I mean, because I sent them a picture of what we had because they weren't sure.
So it's a cage-looking side so that--
Similar size, longer?
It's the same exact size.
Same exact, because I thought we were looking at something bigger.
Where's it, a five-by-eight?
No, it's six-by-ten.
Six-by-ten with eight, that's pretty decent size. So how often do they empty it now?
Once a week.
Once a week.
Once a week?
So at least it'll make that process quicker.
Yeah.
Because he just goes and dumps, it takes him, I think, an hour and a half now.
And it takes two people, right?
Yeah.
So one person can do it now, right?
Well, no, he just go, no, Wayne just goes. I don't think it takes two people to go.
So he shovels it out himself?
Yeah, I think they, I think they help there too.
Okay.
It's a very manual process.
Yeah, I think they back it up with an old hand and they just shovel it out.
Okay.
So is this a power assist or you just jack it and, or how does it mean by hydraulic?
It's a power, yes.
Nice, okay.
It's pretty simple.
It's weight limit on it.
Cans aren't going to weigh that much.
They're not.
Yeah.
Hopefully, it's a little heavy duty than the one we got there.
Just sort of see what the--
That's got one inch--
The ones there, it won't. With holes in it. I might probably get that for you in a second.
For, so forty-nine hundred by six by ten?
Yeah.
Aluminum. With eight-foot sides on it. That's actually a good price. That's actually a really good price. All right, Jersey barriers of the recycling centers control erosion.
That has been taken care of. The highway department went over there and I think they added four and cleaned the whole area up, so. I think there is potential for maybe adding another two, but for right now, the erosion's under control.
Did we get the handicap sign out?
Yes, the handicap signs were there, they were just kind of, I think one of them was actually covered and the other one had fallen down. There was one on an old jersey there.
It was on the building, but you couldn't really, it was there, but you couldn't see it, so they moved it.
So now, right where you go in to dispose of your recyclables, that very first spot is designated handicap and then there's one right along the front side of it as well.
And then one of the guys that works there does have a handicap plate as well. So that was one of the vehicles that was parked there was his because--
All right, assessing veterans' tax credits.
And I just reviewed it in our, in my report.
Yep. General business, the 2023 tax rate setting. That's a little fun stuff. Do you want me to read it? Yeah, if you could, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. For 2023, the Nottingham tax rate set is going to be twenty-one dollars and forty-four cents. This is a rise from last year's nineteen dollars and eleven cents. It breaks down, and we can go over the difference, but the town breaks down, municipality at four dollars, the county breaks down, four dollars and three cents, if you're writing this down. The county breaks down at eighty-four cents. Local education is fourteen dollars and eighty-four cents. State education is one dollar and seventy-three cents for the total of twenty-one forty-four. The largest increases for the two dollars and, sorry, I don't have the math right in front of me, the two dollars and thirty-three cents that has gone up. Just so people know, two dollars of that was from the local education and state education. The town side only went up twenty-five cents, I believe, and three cents for the county. So we have also in our fund balance, which we'll have to talk about, which also have that too. Our current fund balance, which is the reserve for the town of Nottingham, is two million, three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars, eight hundred and nineteen. The state has a minimum recommendation of five percent and a maximum recommendation of seventeen. We currently fall at the eleven dollars and seventy-three percent. I'm sorry, no, eleven dollars seventy-three percent, not dollar-wise. So we are smack basically right in the middle of the high to the low due to the fact that we are not seeing any large deposits into the fund balance due to the fact of the budget being at four percent and us basically working on a thin line that the, I don't foresee us next year having the money to add any into our fund balance. And that's where the money comes from, is usually from the over, what we don't spend in our town budget, that we recommend just leaving the balance the way it is because next year, when things go up, that number could go down if we don't contribute, our percentage purpose-wise. Because you could take eighty-three thousand dollars roughly, just to give an idea, to drop the tax rate by ten cents. But remember, the year after, you're going to see that ten cents tax on to whatever the new number might become. So you might see a larger increase than what we see this year or not. So in my opinion, using the fund balance to buy down the tax rate is not the proper way to go. It's better to be kept for the savings for any misfortunes or anything that we need in the town.
The eleven point seven-three percent that you're retaining in fund balance, the fund balance policy that you adopted in 2022 was set at a target rate of twelve percent, so you're pretty close to it.
Okay. Thank you for that one.
You're welcome.
Steve, Tim, any comments, questions?
The net education grant for, I don't know if you've noticed, for, probably not, but if that's the school board, is if that includes the increase that the state gave--
It should be, it should be reflected on this.
Which is why it took longer to get it. And then obviously, that could increase even more next year because of the lawsuit.
Because of the way the--
The court--
Oh, because of the state adequacy grant calculation?
Doubles, potentially.
That would be nice.
So you're saying that would drop the school taxes?
Would reduce the schools appropriation.
The net education grant's two million right now, it would be closer to three point nine.
Okay.
As long as their appropriations don't go up, they have a ten percent tax cap.
Yeah.
Steve? I don't know what we can do. I mean, it is what it is. I would love to say buy it down, but spending eighty-three thousand dollars to bend it down ten cents doesn't make sense.
No.
To me.
I'm in agreement with you. Do you need a motion?
There is the warrant, the tax warrant to--
To sign.
Sign for the tax collector to issue the tax bills reflective of the tax rate at twenty-one dollars and forty-four cents. Sign for the tax collector to issue the tax bills reflective of the tax rate at twenty-one dollars and forty-four cents. Once that's signed, Tracy will be in the office tomorrow. Um, I think she said that she should be able to get the bills printing tomorrow and we would have them essentially mailed out by the end of the week with a due date of January tenth, twenty twenty-four.
All right. Town beach road access. So in the, you know, I, we've been receiving numerous complaints in regards to, uh, access to the, uh, town beach road. As a reminder to the residents, uh, who are at home and in, in, in present here, that is considered private property and, you know, during the time in which, uh, we don't have access to it from, uh, um, Labor Day to, was it Memorial Day? It's considered private property and the property owners reserve the right to, uh, restrict any access. You know, unfortunately, the, uh, town beach is landlocked, so there's no way of getting there unless you go by boat, um, outside of, uh, using that road. It is private property and they're with it, they're well within their rights to, uh, post it. Anybody else like to add to that?
We've talked about it, this is like the third or fourth.
Yeah, it's the third or fourth time and it is on the website too, right, Ellen?
I would have to check, but I believe.
Yeah, if it's not.
I believe it, the updated beach use regulations have been posted and it states.
Is there a sign posted down that the?
Yes, that all the signage has been updated, the rec department updated it in the fall.
It's, it's unfortunate, um, but again, you know, town doesn't own that road, so, um, we're at the whim of the property owners.
I have a question. Mr. Davis, one thirty-nine Deerfield Road.
Yeah, come up here to the, to the, to. And actually, we're kinda out of order here, so I'll make an exception.
Yeah, so Dan Davis, one thirty-nine Deerfield Road. I've been enjoying that beach for the past twenty-four years and I understand that it's posted, I understand it's private property, it's black and white. Question, come Memorial Day, is the intent to open it back up? And do we have anything to do with that? Is that really just a decision of the Farnolds?
It's an agreement that the Farnolds have made with the town.
So as of now, it's Memorial Day to Labor Day is when that.
Understood, so that's a, that's a handshake between the town and the Farnolds.
Yeah, that's been in place for many, many years. I'm sorry, Tim, I didn't mean to cut off.
Okay, all right, understood. Uh, do we have a clear idea of what the town owns down there? Has it been surveyed? Do we know where the beach ends and Farnold property begins?
That is something that we can review on the, uh, our, uh, tax map records and all that.
Yeah, okay, and also who's been maintaining the road for the past fifty years? Does the town maintain that road? If there's a, a large winter with a big heavy spring and we have a, a culvert that gets washed away, is that on the town or is that on the Farnolds? And how's that worked for the past fifty years?
Probably have to go ask old John Farnold who did it. He'd probably know.
Yeah.
Cause I don't recall, cause never accessed it in the winter, so I never read the spring, so. Have we replaced a culvert anytime? I don't remember.
I've never seen a grater go down it, but.
No, neither have I.
But I can't, can't say.
No, but as John mentioned in that, that's probably a question for John Farnold, cause he would know.
Right, okay, and that's all I really had. I think, um, you know, if the handshake works and it continues to work next summer and the summer after and the summer after, I think that'd be great and I'd be pretty happy. I think the biggest thing is cooperation from our neighbors in town is that, I think one of the issues that has happened over the fall is that people haven't been very polite to the property owners and have been on their property in their backyard and, and they're just not, they're not very nice when they approach them and, and I, I think that makes it a little bit harder to say, well, we'll definitely invite you to be back here Memorial Day through Labor Day, when people aren't respectful at all of them and, and their private property. Mm-hmm, now how about liability issues? As I move from Deerfield Road to the beach, I'm on private land and, uh, does the town have a piece on that or not? I slip, I fall, I break my leg, I don't know.
I think you have a tough time fighting that one.
I, I, I don't know, I'm just throwing stuff out.
It's almost the same as like walking down the street and you fall down, you can't blame the town for this, cause you fell down on the street, so I mean, you have to.
Yeah, I was just wondering if there anything that the town could possibly do to make sure the handshake continues, you know?
I think you'll find that the town only owns from the beach side of the dam to maybe the Earth and Dyke the other way. A very small piece.
Right, the, the sandy area.
Right.
May, maybe the restrooms are not even on the town part.
It's very possible.
Yeah. I think, uh, that's good. I mean, if the posted sign stays up, you'll probably have a lot more people who figure it out come July when it's ninety and sunny and we should try to proactively make them aware, but, you know, if that doesn't happen, I think that's great. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Okay. Use of impact fees, Marston?
I do not see Jean Reed in attendance. Um, we did get a legal opinion on that. Um, it did come through with attorney-client privilege, so you should probably review it in non-public and then we can create a response to Mr. Reed's questions.
All right. Action items review for next meeting? Probably wanna talk about any repairs or done to the site at the recycling center, right?
Yes.
I can forward the trailer specs.
That'd be great to, Ellen, if you wanna share it with the board.
So here's something I'd bring up now. Um, I know we've talked about doing a bonfire at the beginning of the year. Thoughts on using the recycling center to, uh, store some burnable material pallets or any type of burnable wood?
Where, where are you thinking of having it? Down at the pit or?
Down at the pit, but we don't have access to the pit on a regular basis, nor do we want people just using that for a dumping zone.
Well, I guess, I guess the board needs to discuss whether that, that's something that we wanna have. I'm in favor of it. I thought it was a good, uh, uh, community get together.
Don't we agree? Do we already agree upon that?
I thought we already did.
We did, okay.
I think that might have been absent.
Was I absent? I went, okay.
You, the board is, is formally agreed.
All right, good.
We're just looking for a place maybe to store material leading up to.
I don't know if the recycling center is the best location, just.
Like where?
In, in winter season, I mean, they're going to be limited to.
And, well, we might consider proper burning materials there and having it open for people to bring what they think are proper.
Well, that's the beauty of having it at the recycling center, cause if it isn't proper, it goes into the dumpster. Where if we do it off-site, now we're looked at lugging it back to the recycling center.
Either way, we'd be looking at lugging it.
How was it, how was it?
Once, not twice, maybe.
How was it stored last, was it last year?
They used, they used the recycling center.
No, we used the pit.
No, wow.
Dug a hole. Yeah, dug a hole and people brought stuff in, they dumped it in there.
They didn't bring it there, I think the fire department.
Did they? Okay.
Highway.
And highway brought it down. We're very fortunate, we had many, many hands in that. Thank you, Jeff. You're a big help with that.
I think it'd be easy to just bring it down to the pit, so it's a one, just one shot, but maybe we have the gate open one day for residents to come in. Yeah, you may as well have somebody sit there and tell them what they can put down and they can't. Don't leave it as an open dump ground. Yeah.
You're gonna end up with everybody's furniture.
Right, that's exactly, I mean, I'm not even, that's not even being sarcastic. No, but that's a real reality.
So maybe we don't even wanna accept that from the public, maybe we, um, apply our own wood.
How do you go about doing that?
I, I think they have quite a bit of brush stockpiled for it, don't they? Already from the highway department?
I got a bunch of pallets in my work.
It's down in the pit, they've already got a.
I've got a lot of brush.
Section hollowed out for it.
And you get a dump truck. And, uh, several dump trucks, yeah, which I'd be willing to donate the time to move it if need be.
So when we do that, we'll just leave it, that, um.
And again, we're doing a reasonable fire, we're not doing a.
Define reasonable.
Yeah.
Right.
No.
But you know, it's not, it's not.
Yeah. What are you suggesting?
So maybe we don't have the public bring there any wood down. Most, we'll, um, locate it within this board to, um, gather it.
Okay. And was it January we, we discussed?
January sixth.
Look at that, you're on top of things, Steve.
And five to five will be the fire will be getting, I would also say that Steve Roman has done a really good job preparing the pit already for it. And they're already putting the highway departments putting some of their brush in there already.
Did we talk the sixth or did we talk?
It's January sixth, it's a Saturday night.
Guys will be on your own for the most part. On the sixth, I got two events, take me all day, I'll get here. I'll be lucky to be here at six. On the sixth, but that's okay.
Well.
You're, you got a hammer.
Will you, will you do a fire on the Saturday?
I thought we said the thirteenth, but that's okay.
But we haven't publicized anything yet, have we?
No.
Okay, that's, uh, you wanna change it to the thirteenth, would that be better?
If it's better for you and the committee.
Well, Steve wants to take the reins and, you know.
There's, there's no day that works well for me in January, to be honest with you, but I'm booked all, every Saturday through January. On the sixth, I got two, two commitments, morning and afternoon. The thirteenth, I just got an afternoon commitment. Yeah, after that, I'm.
What?
I got something that day too, so, um, yeah.
Well, it's right around the corner.
It is, we, we get, thirteenth would work better for me. I only got one event that day. I could be here in the morning, go to my event at two o'clock, be out by four o'clock and, uh, be on board.
I'd like to change my plans, but I'm gonna have you there.
Okay, thirteenth. Are we making that official? We making this official, guys?
You wanna check with your committee first, Mr. Thor.
You have to check with Peggy and hopefully you.
I won't be able to, have to work. So are we, are we setting it for the thirteenth or are you gonna check with Peggy?
No, no, I don't.
Mm-hmm, you're good?
We can check with the rest of the committee later this, so we can do a poll and. I mean, there's only four or five of us.
So tentatively, all right, we'll just tentatively put it. All right.
The big thing was to sign what we're doing to the wood situation.
Okay. Any, uh, anything else?
Yes, um, I will be posting a public hearing under RSA thirty-one ninety-five B for the acceptance of unanticipated funds. We received additional special highway block grant funds. Um, I think it was in the neighborhood of forty, I don't have the exact figure with me, but I think it was about forty-six thousand dollars. Uh, it's the same special grant that we got last year with a certain amount appropriated for bridges and highways, so. It's another allocation that was distributed this year.
Speaking of, uh, bridges and all that stuff, can we get an update maybe by the next meeting or so, or, or rather quickly in regards to Kelsey Cooper Hill and Berry Road?
Um, sure. Kelsey Cooper and Berry?
Yes.
Okay.
Those were all troubled ones prior to Sean leaving and I'm sure they're still troubled ones.
I know, um, Kelsey and Cooper Hill specifically, we had the Warren article for the engineering and I, I'm pretty sure that process just recently started. Uh, we still have to go through and do the wetlands permitting separately.
Okay.
But I think that, I think the design process is, is underway. Not sure about Berry, I'll, I'll look into that one.
And we also have the highway depart, uh, New Hampshire DOT, starting, what, twenty twenty-five in regards to the bridge on one fifty-two by the school? Is it next year or twenty-five? It's coming up, but that's, that's something that we wanna make sure we coordinate with police and fire as far as, uh, um, calls for service and so on details.
Okay.
Anything else?
So you're scheduling that public hearing?
Yes, I have to, um, I have to post it with five days' notice, so I will schedule it for your December, if you, unless you wanna do a separate meeting, I can just schedule it as part of the December eighteenth agenda. It shouldn't take too much time.
Yeah. Okay, if there's nothing else, I will open this up to public comments. If there's anybody in the audience here that would like to make a comment, please come up and, uh, state your name.
Doug Cummings, three forty-eight Stage Road.
Go ahead.
Just a, a simple question, if you would. Raise your hand if you believe in a free and fair society, that the accused has the right to defend themselves from an accuser. Raise your hand.
Kind of question is that?
In absence of that, that's cancel culture. In other words, alls I have to do is accuse you of something and you lose your job. We put you there so that this stuff wouldn't happen. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Have a good evening. Anybody else? No? I missed the, uh, budget thing. Uh, do we wanna go over that real quick? Is there any?
Well, I mean.
They're working on it.
It's no, it's not the budget committee that's working on it. We need to present, uh, what we think we should have discussed.
They already presented?
No.
No, 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 we're still, the departments have, in, in the work session, you had made some cuts.
Okay, that's what it was, all right, all right. We still got a lot of cuts to go.
Yeah.
Lot of conversation happening for cuts. Time's coming.
The budget committee meets again on the fourteenth of December.
In our meeting, we've got a workshop scheduled for.
The thirteenth, tentatively.
I do not think that one workshop for us is gonna get what we need to get done.
No, you're right.
There's too many things to discuss, there's too many issues.
You were three hours at the last work session and cut about a hundred thousand.
Right.
Was it even that much?
So. Well, where would you like to start, John?
Well, I mean, I, I've been getting, we talked at the last meeting about coming things, you know, and I've been looking at this and, you know, again, like everything's up for discussion. You know, especially under, you know, I always started at the, um, you know, our executive side. You know, where we had line thirteen. You know, they're asking to go up. You know, I, I don't know if we can support going up fifty, one hundred dollars to twenty thousand. I know what we spent or where we're spending, but again, I question where that line there, whether or not we're gonna need, we can take fifteen hundred dollars or two thousand off. I look at the website hosting, where we didn't spend any of the twenty-five hundred, you know, can we cut two thousand or can we cut fifteen hundred dollars off that line there? Then you go to the postage line on the, um, I, I have just line items that, unless you're sitting there looking like I am through mine, you know, different items which, you know, every five hundred dollars we find off here is gonna make a difference. And I know like those aren't needle movers, but when you take thirty of them or, or whatever, it's gonna be, you know, we're gonna have to. You know, we're gonna have to pinch everything. With big items, we can say take off, but again, you know, as we had conversations before, you know, we brought up the idea of taking the Fire Department cruiser off the line.
The police department.
Police department, sorry. The Fire, Police Department's cruiser off the line. Let me tell ya, that's not favorable. But again, we're not here, we can't be here to be favorable to everybody, but that's... You know, important that towards a Warren article. That's something they need every single year and it gets done every single year. Uh, but I feel like there's a lot that if, again, if we don't wanna talk about it tonight, we should be talking about it sometime this week. Or again, find some time next week that's gonna be there. You know, I know we have the workshop, but I don't think one time's getting through and time's moving quick.
Yep.
Cause we basically kiss away all the end of December with the holidays and stuff like this going on, so... Unless you wanna put that time in then, it's fine with me, but...
Could be set by January, right?
Yeah.
Through us and through the Budget Committee.
Yeah.
So there ain't a whole lot of time.
Alright, well- The board's prepared to go through some of this tonight, um...
Well, again, we talked at the last meeting about, I mean, again, that's why I thought we were gonna at least probably stick another hour tonight on this.
True.
Cause our, it's only 8 o'clock, not even. We can do this till 9:00 and then our non-public shouldn't take more than a half hour, so 9:30? Three-hour meeting?
That works.
I don't think you have the full budget, do you, Ben?
No, I don't.
So I'll have to go grab copies of it?
Copy.
I have to grab my copy.
How did that one, only get partial?
That does not include the changes we made at the last meeting.
This one?
That does not, yeah.
Okay.
Right, I'm still holding on to the last meeting, we made little notes on it.
Right.
So I'm looking at where I wasn't making notes, just to continue on. And I didn't get to ask the, the Budget Committee, because I thought we had a meeting, but our... The last meeting we have, but we don't, so that's gonna be on the subject for-
Okay.
For Wednesday night.
Okay.
Um, for their budget.
Alright, so we talked about the planner.
Yeah.
And some of that.
Yep.
Well, do you wanna start at the top first, John? Like, the items that you just mentioned when Alan comes back?
Yeah, I mean, again, I-
Well, it hasn't been spent this year.
The what?
The, for, you went, I think you mentioned equipment mileage and web hosting? Those three items, 17, 18, 19, or 18, sorry. Yeah, 17, 18, 19 on the-
Sure, I, I wasn't mentioning those, those are some of the, you know, website hosting. You know... You know, more definition, um, we've got $2,500, we didn't spend any on it this year, we gotta back in as a line item for $2,500.
Well, I'm wondering if that-
But then you're right on the office, the other things too, which we didn't spend. Can we get away this year without spending anything more on equipment and mileage? But again, yeah, there's, there's... Well, if we cut those all in half, you know, or take them off as a line item, but at least do half off. And nobody likes what we're doing, but...
Now, in line 19. Talk to us.
Website hosting?
Yeah.
Uh, that is our host with, um, it used to be Virtual Towns and Schools, it's... Our hosting for the website, it hasn't been expended yet, it's an end-of-year billing.
So they will-
And it's the cost of $2,500 exactly?
It is the cost of, um, I can tell you exactly how much it costs. Maybe.
Sounds pretty sure we discussed that.
I think we did, but I'm just going over again.
I don't have last year's expenditure, so I can't pull it up, but it is, it is in line with whatever our agreement is.
Right.
I, there was not, um... There was no anticipated increase this year, so we just level funded it.
Line 18 mileage?
Mileage is if we attend any trainings or conferences or have to go to the Registry of Deeds for any matters. Um, it could potentially be cut. It's gonna be based on the IRS-approved mileage rate, which I think is like 57.5 cents per mile right now.
Well, good thing everything's about 30 miles away from here.
I mean, the budget is pretty far.
Doesn't matter. There's no need to go very far, cause nothing's far from here, so...
Any thoughts? Like, I'd say we either drop the miscellaneous or decrease some of those 17, 18 line items to make it not surprise. Miscellaneous, 600's been spent, $2,000 budget, so we can drop that too.
Well, you could, if, if you kept the other line, the mileage and equipment, and you, you know, take a thousand off that one-
Right.
Leave those lines the way it is, but that's for right now. We might come back and revisit that, but...
They are saying reduce it to a thousand.
Yeah.
The miscellaneous line?
Yes.
That's what I would go for, take it off, make it a thousand.
Are we... Taking the 400 out of the equipment or no?
No, I think we're just saying we'll leave that.
What is the equipment?
Uh, the equipment would be if we have to replace a printer or something small.
Before, I'm gonna cover a printer, does it?
Like a single-use workstation printer, it will. They throw away now. But for the most part, we do most of our, um, printing through the photocopier. Quicker, it's more efficient, it's laser printing, so it's cheaper on the ink. It's actually, the ink is included in our contract, our lease contract.
Sorry, we can cut that out.
We just pay for it. You could cut that $200.
Getting that, Tim?
Yep.
So it was just the equipment and the miscellaneous so far that's been reduced?
Yeah.
Moving on to the next one?
Well, uh, just one question under licensing software, software licensing, sorry. I was, but, um, we had a budget of $4,000, we only spent so far right now $2,300. We proposed a budget of, we already cut $2,000 off that.
We have, but we added into the, um...
I'm just looking to see-
The service contracts and equipment maintenance, it was added into that. So the Office 365 subscriptions, those are now included in our invoicing through Back Bay, which is our IT support.
Can we take another thousand off that line? If we're putting it into the line right below it?
Yes.
So there you go, line 12. Again, we don't have to go through every department tonight, but at least let's get an hour of work in, is what I'm trying to-
So we're done with the executive?
Unless there's something else you see on there for right now?
Saying if we go through it and we say we're done, then we move on to town clerk. Instead of all of us jumping ahead and-
Yeah.
Stay focused and on, on point. In line 29, the fees. I'm sure we got some year-end fees coming in. Don't think any one of us can speak to that. Don't have anything to do, Alan? Town clerk?
It's all town clerk.
Alright.
Separate.
So what, can we go back to one more thing, and again, this is, we can come back to this at next meeting? Cause we'll get, we'll probably go through everything, that's what I'm gonna be set. But just on the line 5, for where it says merit compensation pool. Um, the police already figured that in their budget.
This was heavily discussed at the Budget Committee meeting. Uh, what they would like to see is that the merit increase that applies to the police department, they want that pulled back into the merit compensation pool.
So that everything for merit compensation was all-
In one line item.
So do we find out how much Fawn put away into her budget for that?
I, I can find out, yes. Cause what I had done was it, it pre-fills, the formula pre-fills throughout the spreadsheet based on all the, the salaries. And then you add a percentage to it, and I think in, for budgetary purposes, I think I plugged in either 4% or 5% for average merit increase. Um, and then I pulled out, like, $50,000 or some random figure, because the police department had already calculated theirs into the budget. So I reduced that merit compensation pool by... I think when it, when it originally calculated out, it came out to like 100 and something thousand across the board for merit compensation increases. Because the police department had already factored it into their department, I reduced that merit compensation line item.
So good.
So $50,000 would be what's available for all other employees for increases throughout the year.
Right, but then you're just basically telling me right now, from what I'm getting, is that the police has roughly $50,000 in their line item as merit compensation also on top.
But it's also, it's also your largest staffed department.
I'm not-
Yeah.
I'm still-
Yes.
But I'm just saying, so, I, you know-
Without having the exact breakdown, that's, that's the figure that I used.
Well, can we have that ready for, and if you talk to Fawn, for next meeting?
Yes.
So that we know where we can set that number at? Cause you know, if it's at 125, if it comes in, you know, maybe 100's the number, there's $25,000 we can find right there as a, as a line item. I mean, there's a thing we can, you know, work with. Are we on the town clerk quickly, or are we, you know?
Yep.
I don't know where you cut?
I got it.
And postage?
I mean, that's probably the only thing that's in there.
We talked about it with the-
It's the absentee balances, uh, ballots.
Right. And we don't know what to expect this year with primary and general election. It's gonna be a lot higher than it has been.
And town election.
In town. So, we're-
Yeah, it's-
I mean, a laptop is the only other thing that brought any of their budget up. $1,200 for a laptop and that will make... It'll allow the assistant to be able to work at the same time that the-
Town clerk.
Town clerk is in the lead in the election process. As far as counting absentee ballots and all the rest of the stuff that... Again, it's $1,200. Realize every bit counts. You go on to election. Department. Huge increase in salaries to the election workers.
Forty, line 41 under that, you know, maybe we can count that, again, 30-day letters and checklist printing, forms, ballot printing. I mean, are we gonna expend the full $5,700?
Well, at least to find what she had presented. Cause we got-
Oh, no, it's three huge, it's three, elect, it's... Four. Even worse.
Right, we dropped it from 57 to 1,000. How much more you wanna cut it?
No.
Postage we cut in half. Salaries, so it's a big nut on that.
Did we cut line 41 on printing or from, that what you just said?
Not printing, no, we cut.
Right, cause I didn't have that note in my-
In 41, we went from 57 to 1,000?
No.
No.
Right, cause I didn't, I didn't write that as a note. I just made a note of cutting it 750, but that's-
I think this is my Budget Committee worksheet.
Well, that's, that's-
Separate committee.
But that's where I was just thinking, I mean, again, modest, but...
I mean, I think it's, if, I don't get to think, uh, but this department's gonna be tough, cause, I mean, we're already over budget this year. If one-
With one extra election.
Exactly.
And mine, two extra.
Two, the primary and the special, but... Realistically, if you, uh, it's just gonna have to come from some of ourselves when we spend it, cause we're gonna, we're gonna spend what's there. And probably more, in my opinion. And we don't have a choice.
So line 41, I heard someone say 750, is that where we're going with?
5750. John had suggested reducing it by 750 to 5,000.
Again, it's, I'm just trying to find, as we go down, just to- Uh, there was also just a, was it last Thursday?
The training.
The training?
Mm-hmm. I don't know how many are here for it, but...
The daytime was more, there was more attendance at the daytime than the nighttime.
But the, I guess the, John's question is probably that the line 43, the training is $3,200, the budget this year is 200, that that training-
It's actually taking place at 23.
Right. That'd be, that would be the question. But I know they get the new machines next year, was that training on the new machines?
I, I believe there is additional training for the... The other elections.
I'll highlight it.
Thank you.
Forty-three, highlight it. Is that what you said?
Yep.
What were you thinking?
I'm actually going through reading everything. We're on the Financial Administration Department, right?
Yep.
Okay.
When we cut the mortgage research, line 65 to 700 at our last meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Did we talk about postage?
Well, we haven't mailed out the tax bills. And they're getting mailed out in Jan, you know, they give them good mail.
They'll get mailed out the end of this week.
Next year, postage's going up anyway.
Signups get it online.
Right.
We're putting a mailing label on the envelopes that alerts people that they can sign up online.
Good. Practical.
So we're signing up online. You only read you can sign up online unless you're paying online, is to use the tax code.
Correct.
So I think being clear about that, you really can't go online.
Right.
Which then, what Trace is going to do?
But she's willing to do it to save the postage.
Right.
It's less envelopes we have to stuff, so.
We enter the assessing department.
So did we cut on the Financial Administration Department? Office supplies, did we cut to 600? Line 63. Now, we talked about that one time.
We've spent almost 1,700 this year.
Was it a one-time, was it a one-time expenditure?
I don't have any notes that's saying that it was a one-time expenditure.
Are you recommending we reduce it to 600 then?
Not if we went that high over.
Okay.
I don't know why we went that high over. Office supplies. Almost $1,100 over.
I've had that for you. For assessing was in 79, 82, and 83. Those are all contracted expenses, right?
Correct.
Did we figure out number yet of what our revenue is so that we find out our exact number where we need to sit?
Well, the, we haven't done the estimated for 2024 yet, but if we go off of our net revenues that we're used to set the tax rate, we were at $2,506,786, which is only about $20,000 off of what was estimated. And there really isn't that much change from year to year. This year, we did see a little bit of an increase in our room and meals tax revenue from the state because it's based on population. So, I mean, I think if we, if we use a plug figure, equivalent to what we've used in the past year, we're safe. $2,550,000, if you want to plug.
And then in personal admin, the copy of the budget that we have doesn't include the health insurance increase in the draw, I mean?
It does.
Oh, that doesn't?
We, I have factored that in there.
Okay. It's, it's a 12% increase.
The narratives are incorrect on most of these line items. They're not being updated.
No, I mean, there's no narrative, it just is...
Oh, okay. Yes, it's, well, and I think that's based on, so it's based on the plan for the individuals. So we may have some positions that have changed from like a family plan to maybe a single or two-person. So it's reflective based on the actual... And we're also down the... There still should be, no, I was going to say any vacant positions are factored in there at the family scenario of justice.
But the short-term disability, long-term disability in life, those are all high, budget is higher right now than 2020, the actual, but would you circle it down?
We got more in the payroll though.
And short-term and long-term are based on enrollment and age or demographics. It's higher rating as, as the age of the employee increases.
So you know the premium, because the premium's dropped, right?
Yes. I, I have, I have the short-term and long-term disability as well as the employee FICA. I have those marked from last week's Budget Committee meeting as ones that I have to look into. I have to make sure that those formulas are carrying forward because for the, the increase in salaries across the board, the FICA actually went down, which didn't make sense.
I don't think you can do anything with that department, can you? Personal Administration Department told them, I mean, it is what it is. Other than that FICA line that we look at.
Yeah, it looks like in the tax sheet, the FICA should be 93,000.
So it's not carrying forward into that.
Another 20 grand we got to cut? I know we questioned secretary's salaries.
Yes, so it is all for Planning Board and zoning board. It's all lumped into the Planning Board salary, uh, secretary's salary. So when you move forward to ZBA, nothing has been expended. It's all lumped into that total. She doesn't break down.
Then we cut, talk about cutting after the 2,400 off that line item?
Did we what? The 2,400 off the ZBA or the zoning board budget?
Right, zoning board.
No, we didn't.
But we can.
Are we paying her?
We're paying.
$22,400 or are we paying her 20 grand? I mean, what the?
It's hourly, so it's based on the number of meetings.
Okay.
But so far this year, we expended 18.5.
Correct, for both.
For both.
And this was through 11.15.
So we can cut the zoning salary 17. Do we make that zero?
Are you talking about one, line 117?
Right. Or do we make that a dollar?
Make that a dollar.
Keep the line or do we do away with the line?
Keep the line.
Are we, so are we doing anything more with Planning Board or no?
Oh, we're kind of working around it because it impacts the line 117. Yeah, 117, 101 are playing, and, and are working together. That's why we jumped.
So we lined this one out, right?
To 102. Which you're going to find out on Wednesday or...
Well, I'll find out Wednesday. I mean, I'll, I'll talk to, talk to Blair when he's here. I'll literally say, hey?
We can't afford to every meeting.
Uh, well, that's a part of the open conversation that we have. Do we have them at, when we're only doing, you know, site plan reviews for large developments or what we have them for? I mean...
Can we pay them by the hour, it's in an hourly?
Yeah, I mean, I'm at every single, I mean, I, I like the guy, I think he's, you know, he's a, does a good job.
He's known us a good service.
He is, but again, it's...
But if you don't need him there, so it's him being there.
We're in tough times.
But you want to put a star on that one?
I already have it from last time.
What, 115?
102.
Now, what about 115?
Go, go there you go.
Oh, yeah. I mean, that's, that's a whole nother, that's... I mean, yeah, we cut it last year and it got back in, so we can... That was put in at deliberation.
Yep.
Right, and it's not really labeled correctly. It's not miscellaneous.
No, we actually have a, um, we have a budget for regional planning associations. There's a separate department, if you will, within the budget, or that should be. It doesn't necessarily need to be under the Planning Board.
And is it in there, is it double? Or we just haven't relocated it?
We haven't relocated it.
That'd be nice if it was double, what's the one?
It's not. What do you mean, the town spoke? They wanted us to join it?
Well, for years, we weren't.
I know.
I mean, many, many, many years.
You know, we do have two members that go to the meetings, you know, one of the things before was going to the meetings and, you know, why go when you don't have a vote? You know, it's almost like, why are you being there if I can't vote for, I mean?
Well, let me ask you this.
More of informative, but you could literally just read the email afterwards and get the same information.
I know we voted to join it. Is anybody going?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I know we were struggling getting somebody to... Take that position.
So, but going back to the planner, I know the budget right now is 28,000. We've expended 18 up to November 15th. Could we at least reduce that to 20 for now? And then you discuss with the, or no, you want to discuss with the?
Do you want me to speak out of turn without talking to the Planning Board yet?
Yeah.
I'll be happy to throw my opinion, what I, what I would like to tell them. I'm not afraid to give the discussion. I want to tell them that we should probably cut it in half and that it should only be at half the meetings.
Most of these...
Make that number 14.
Most of these items were carried forward from last year. They were level funded because the only thing that I, the only request for change that I received from the Planning Board was to update the Stratford Regional Planning dues because that's reflective of the population. And then consideration for updates to be made to the master plan, so.
Yeah, we don't, and so the, the Planning Board, again, doesn't even have a master plan, uh, across a group or anybody even set up to volunteer or anything yet for it.
And they were talking about doing it piecemeal in sections, like taking a section this year. Ian actually showed up, Ian McKinnon showed up for the Budget Committee presentation.
Okay, good.
And, and talked about taking sections at a time. There are certain things within the master plan that don't necessarily need to be updated. It's stuff that we'll just carry forward into future ones, but then...
Taking small bites.
Taking small bites, exactly.
So the original plan was done in 2012 was a plan because the town didn't have one. So the exuberant cost of hiring somebody to do, because I was on the Planning Board at the time, was we had to have a, we had a guy, I think, you know, the new fields was coming and we had to meet, like, somebody knows how to write a master plan and they did it. So now it's just revising.
Right.
You know, are there certain things in there that we might need to contract out just to get an opinion to make sure that we're doing it correctly? Sure. I think that's where that $1,000 is what they're predicting is going to come in. But again, now they say if they're going to piecemeal it out, and again, I can have this conversation on Wednesday, they're probably listening tonight, which is good, you know, what are we going to piece out? What do we need to know? Are you going to piece out all this easy stuff this year? Are you going to piece out the, are we working on the harder steps? Where do we need to know? How much money do we think we need to spend on that? It's easy to put a number in there, but then they've not spent the number or, you know, because I mean, if we're going over, you know, like a lot of things that are in the master plan, the history part and stuff there. I don't know how much more history we're going to add into our master, you know, just that, that section of it or, or anything like this because it hasn't changed. It's still the same, you know, so what parts of that whole document are they going to look at? Because that might be an extra little bit of, I mean, again, it might be only 500 bucks we take off of, but... But there's potentially, you know, I mean, the planner? Again, if he cuts half the meeting, we still make it a fourteen, and we cut that thing in half, and he's still only at half the meetings, the ones that are, you know, the due diligence, the ones that we need him, when we're talking about twenty-five lots subdivisions. You know, it's a discussion to have with him, I mean, one way they like it, there's gonna be a decision made.
Yep.
So, and again, not everybody's gonna like this, but that's...
And then we talk about one-oh-three, the postage?
Yep.
Bringing that down to...
So we had said a dollar, because...
We had said a dollar, yeah.
Because it's reimbursable.
It's reimbursable.
But... My question is, if it's a revenue, right, I mean, there's a lot of revenues, but we still account for the expense, right? Why is this different?
So we just need to make sure that we're not accounting for it on the revenue side.
Right.
If there's an expense, there has to be a revenue. If there's an expense moved down to a dollar, I just need to make sure we're not accounting for it on the revenues. So we're fine there.
Then one-oh-seven, registered deeds, did we talk about taking that right out?
Yes. Because the applicant's paying it at the recording, at the time of recording.
So we make that zero, do right, right away with that line?
Yes.
Uh, there is a question on postage, so we'll go back on Planning Board.
Yeah.
About to bring this back up, and I just thought of something. We do have, um, members that like us to get mailed the packets beforehand, and each packet, you know, beforehand, so every week, we're getting a package, all some members of the Board or, eh, wherever we are, so, and they're like three dollars a package. So, you could see an expense there, that is not reimbursed.
No, that's part of that.
That, that's part of that, so it could be a five hundred dollars right there over the course of the year, that we are actually expenditure on us getting our, you know, like when...
Right, at the meeting, at the meeting.
Yeah.
Why can't they do email? This, this is his question.
Hey, I'm fine with it.
Right.
There was other people that weren't fine with it. You know, like, I started going in on the whole...
No, I hear you.
You can watch it and find out who, you know, who wants it or not.
Right, you could opt in or opt out.
Yeah, but...
Not everybody needs to get it mailed.
But again, for what Alana's doing, it's easier just to make sure everybody, you know, do, do the same for everybody, it's just, it's a simpler process. You know, for them, people changing, people not getting it, there's no excuses, we're all prepared. So again, I mean, that might have to be a five hundred dollar expense that we need to keep in there as a line item, instead of putting it to one because of that procedure way of doing it.
So we putting it back in?
Five, for five hundred.
I'm just saying, unless we, again, I'll bring it back, I'll bring up all these things that we're discussing tomorrow, Wednesday night. So... But I mean, again, that should be, it's... Could be fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars, but...
All right, so we won't spend more time on Planning Board then, because you're gonna go to the meeting on Wednesday and talk to them?
Well, um, you know, again...
We're adding the other items from our last meeting in there.
But again, remember, it's, it's our, I mean...
No, I know.
It's our budget, so we're gonna, right?
We're gonna cut whatever we're willing to.
It's just like the advertisement, that was a reimbursable fee.
Right.
So we thought we could zero that out, so there was twenty-five hundred bucks there, we could...
But again, yeah, it's, uh, so it's up to us, so... That's, I mean, that's... But again, I'll have that for, when we have our next meeting, I'll have the answers for all that. So I'm just gonna leave this in my car and bring it back and...
Okay. Zoning?
Oh, we already know with the secretary?
Yep.
Town halls, other buildings?
We already made some fair amount of cuts on that.
Yeah.
We went through the electric rates, we cut all of them.
Are we on our buildings, you mean?
Yeah. Bring them back in line. You know, and why the library was...
Well, here's...
So low. We appropriated seventy-three fifty and...
It's on your mind, John.
As of the printing of this one sheet, it was at thirty-six twenty-six. So many of these work sheets now, I don't know which one is...
Can we look at line one-twenty-eight on the town offices?
Which line?
One-twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, yep.
The mowing and shoveling?
Yep.
But if we hired a maintenance guy, right? Is that what we're looking at doing?
They're not gonna be, so, they're gonna be working on project and facilities, maintenance, they...
The buildings.
We have, we have a separate person that's going to be doing the shoveling, and then the mowing is for...
Not the field.
Not the field.
So what are they mowing?
There's a must be shovel.
Yeah, what are they mowing? So what are you mowing?
That, it must be shovel.
This field out here.
No.
That's contracted out.
That's in rec.
Yeah, that's all included in the...
That's in the rec budget.
Well, you know, if we have that, uh, our, we, if we hire the, the guy right there, shoveling snow is only gonna be a slight occasional problem, I mean, it's not, well, we don't know.
We don't.
Right, and we're only, and we're cleaning just the front and stuff, they're like, you're not, just the walkways, the access areas is really all that they're doing.
It's all, it's all exit areas, it's the police station.
Right, this whole walkway has to be snowblowed. Emergency.
Guess we'll have a discussion on why that, uh... Anything else in that area? Well, I think, well, that's not, that's not... Town buildings are a hundred ninety-five thousand dollars in budget, I know it's only a two percent thing, but I know, again, we, we keep, the, the buildings aren't getting any better repair, but...
That's just to keep them heated and lit. For the most part, clean. So, yes, um, there is a portion, I, I was just looking at where...
You know, here's a question, too.
So that, that is for Fernald, Chad Fernald. For the mowing.
Let's just have a discussion right now, quickly.
The five thousand dollars, though.
So I think what he does is he breaks it up for just like the front end of the building versus the field, he must invoice it out separately, because it's, uh, three hu, it's like three hundred and forty-five dollars per mow that he charges. Twice a month on average.
There's nothing to mow up, Frank. Well, you gotta mow with the leach field. That's not part of the, uh, that's not part of the fields.
Fields is separate, and then he weed whacks around, along the side of the building. It'll be a lot easier now.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, just a question right now, as we have, just, just, again, I'm throwing out everything, because line thirty-four, uh, one-thirty-four to one-thirty-eight, and then add in line, oh, there's nothing on that line, so it doesn't matter. Recycling building, Freeman Hall. We had a line item last year for maintenance, right, I know we had a, um, a warrant article. We had a warrant article for maintenance, we have all these line items for maintenance.
Was it for maintenance or was it...
The warrant article was for the building maintenance expendable trust fund, so technically that's your reserve funds that you put the money into, so when something comes up, but unfortunately, there was a lot of need that presented itself last winter into the beginning of this year, where we, we expended quite a bit of that, rather than having it set aside for future. That was the frozen pipes, the boiler replacements, the...
AC at the library.
Yeah, it was like a snowball effect, just one right after another.
Well, there's... So the question is, can we put, could we, again, not that I wanna see more warrant articles, but... Could we pull the maintenance fund? Sorry, what, what? I don't know, like, just, again, there's two, three...
You wanna consolidate them?
Into a warrant article?
As to a warrant, all, all building, like, but again, how do you write that as for another one? Or we're gonna have to think of war, we're coming to the point where warrant articles are gonna have to cover what we can and find in expenditure. Not the way we wanna do it, but this, I mean, I don't know where we're seeing here halfway, you know, we can make some real, like, we can talk about the fire, the police, uh, cruiser again, that's not gonna be, but there you go. And again, you don't wanna talk about the story, but do we cut the part-time police officer? And again, I'm, I'm just throwing out a number, because if, I mean, we have to find a way to cut, things aren't gonna be happy and good, and I, I'm sorry that I'm the one that's gonna be here bold enough to say it, but it is what it is.
That's a lot of money you can move out. But...
What if it doesn't get approved by the voters? Buildings are already in a... Granted, I think we could probably, I mean, I think the voters would support it, but what, what by chance if they don't? Then we have no money for...
What are you talking about?
If you're talking about consolidating all of this into a warrant article.
Yeah, again, I'm throwing out ideas.
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 I hear what you're saying, John, I think, you know, that's, that's what we need, we need the ideas thrown out there, try to come up with something.
Forty-five recycling center.
A lot of money.
Yep.
We might be able to lower the heat bills a little bit.
That's just, no, I'm just talking just maintenance.
Right.
Stuff we did drop, some of that, not just...
Again, so, you know, when we sit here and we talk about this, right? Now we should have a, a bold and honest discussion with each other here. If we had to put fifty thousand there, or find fifty thousand somewhere else, what are... And we have to leave it up to the voters to vote for where it would be, where would you trust the voters to spend money on? What's the feel?
Depends on your audience.
Right.
I'm a lousy gambler.
I don't like to gamble, but same here. I just don't think we should gamble with police or fire.
Like, we're gonna have to.
Yeah, I don't think it's a choice.
As I said, as I said the last meeting, do you wanna be that, the, that one calls for service and that they're not coming if a cruiser or an ambulance breaks down?
Hey, we already talked about taking the two hundred off the skim coating project, right?
Yeah.
Are we still gonna find another two? We're still...
Budget committee wants to add to it.
Yeah, great. Yeah, we're three to five years behind on maintenance of these roads.
They're saying, they wanted to put another...
They, they, they wanna take what was put in the warrant article last year back in the operating budget, which puts us further behind.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Well, we know that doesn't mathematically work.
No.
So I don't know why it's even being discussed there, to add money into a budget that we're trying to, we're already, you know, our proposed budget's already over. You know, they're the defenders of the four percent, then let's...
So do you wanna reduce the building maintenance items to one dollar, and then write up a warrant article for forty-six thousand or fifty thousand dollars?
We're not there. I'm not there yet, but I'm just saying that I'm putting this out for us to, then just to have it out there in the public eye.
Well...
That these are things that are being discussed.
So, this is, going along with that mindset, John, um... You know, I'm just looking at, I'm not saying I, I support it or not, but line twenty-two, line one-fifteen, you know, these are areas that we could cut.
Don't worry, we went over all those.
Yeah, I'm just throwing other ideas out there, I'm not saying I support them, I'm just throwing other ideas out there, I mean, we're throwing maintenance on the, out there on buildings that are falling apart as it is, so... Again, these are all just topic of discussion, doesn't mean we're gonna...
You say the lake advisory with mill foil, it's going in that place there, that that money's not gonna be well spent either, that's like maintaining a building, but again... There's already one out there, I think.
Again, this is just throwing everything out, out there, not saying we all support it.
Well, again, I, I would, I'd love to say I don't support cutting anything, but...
I know, and actually, I mean, this is pretty conservative budget considering.
Well...
These cuts are only gonna get harder and harder every year.
Tim, where do we sit right now? What do we have, like, one-fifty?
Over?
No, on our cut that we just made.
Oh, yeah, like, one-forty-six. Or three-forty-three, above what we need to be, right?
I will just comment that last year proposed a six percent increase to the Budget Committee, and it was up to them to find the additional four, or the additional two percent to make the four percent.
Yeah, we're not even close to that one, are we?
But eventually, you're gonna get to a point where... Where else do you cut?
Yeah, but seen that some...
Without just...
So we just gonna highlight... So are we just gonna highlight the maintenance ones for these buildings and give it some more thought? Is that what we want to do? You did say that. Let's move along then.
I will look again at the heat and the electric to see if we can fine tune those at all.
I don't see anything we can do with cemeteries or the insurance.
And just so we can go back to one quick thing, salary maintenance. Which one? We're still on the town offices because we'll move on. 126.
126?
Did we cut that off? Last time?
I mentioned it in these...
I have a star beside it, so I don't know if we cut it.
We flagged it, but didn't actually cut it.
So getting onto that right there kind of goes with my same thing if we have a guy shoveling. This salary maintenance guy, can't he shovel too? Or she? I'll be sad either way, but... All right, maybe just keep that line mowing. Because we're already paying for somebody to do this there. Which obviously, we didn't put it in the budget. We didn't have anybody, but if... I mean, I could cut that in half if you're saying at the $600 times six, right? 36? Close.
What?
The mowing and shoveling.
Yeah.
So we're really only gonna pay for mowing. Because if we have a guy that we're hiring, 126 for maintenance, shouldn't our maintenance guy be shoveling the driveway?
Well, number one, that... That number's too low anyway. But regardless, we haven't spent it. But I'm... I hear what you're saying. That's why I said we hadn't... We didn't spend it last year. We didn't spend it the year before because we couldn't find somebody to do it for $10,000. Here we are.
Was that part of the $40,000 that we...
No, this is separate.
Can it be?
Well, it all depends. I mean, the $40,000 was raised by warrant article this year. Probably with the hope of putting somebody in place, we can encumber those funds for use into next year, into 2024. But then what happens beyond that, once that $40,000 is gone? So if you want to move forward, I mean, $40,000, getting a person in place to at least start working on some of these facility needs is a good start.
I want to see somebody that's actually gonna put a hammer and nail together and actually do something for 40 grand. I don't need another opinion.
Well, that's why it's a working facilities manager.
If we have somebody that's paying 40,000, I see again next year that the 40,000 just got us an opinion and didn't get us actually a full list of stuff being taken care of and done.
That's why we advertised it as a working facilities.
We don't want an idea person.
That... I'm just reiterating to make sure that that's well stated.
But that warrant article is the pay for the person.
Or company.
Or company. Okay. The warrant article for the maintenance part of it, it's already spent.
Uh, no, the... The $90,000 that was added into the building maintenance expendable trust fund has almost been fully expended, correct? There's like a $50,000.
Okay, so are we putting another warrant article forward for another $90,000?
We haven't had that discussion yet.
Yeah, well, I mean, it'd be kind of pointless to have a guy with no money to...
Some ability to...
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, and again, if we have that $90,000 and we have a guy that's gonna work on it, then we go back to the question of all these maintenancees we have on the buildings, don't we?
Well, that's what... That's just general maintenance. This isn't...
That's like...
Fixing major problems.
This is general maintenance.
Right.
Right, right, okay.
That's when the doorknob breaks and we need to fix it. That's when we have to buy light bulbs. That's when...
You gotta fix a small electrical problem or something. I mean, it's smaller projects, but the stuff we're talking about from the facilities report is gonna be much larger. And that's gonna take larger warrant articles. And the person that was spending this money on, we're hiring to help with doing some stuff, the smaller stuff, but also to figure out what are our priorities going to be and what the potential cost's gonna be for each of those items. That's my understanding of that meeting that we had last month. Right, John?
Yeah, good. But now that we're... I mean, I remember what they... The set plan, again, I guess now because we're really sitting there focusing on every bit of dollars that we have, I'm just looking at preparing for what those dollars are gonna be spent for exactly. Like that $90,000, you know? Why can't you fix a doorknob with some of that money in there? I know we say it's for big items, but our setex has already been kind of fixed here for ready. The heating system already been last year has been fixed. I mean, we obviously can use all new windows. Is that on that priority? I don't know, but we'll figure that out as one of the... Because that was part of the things what they wrote on there as expense. You know, I mean, there's... Okay. So that's where I'm just starting to question the money, you know, and how we're gonna spend it and where we can cut off here if we can use some of that warrant. To go with two warrant articles for maintenance, I think is... Is ready for disaster. Because people are gonna see two, and you know they're gonna say vote to... They're gonna say negative to one. Consciously, that's what I would think of, not knowing what I know. It's like, wait, they're not gonna get two, just get one. So that's why when I'm thinking about these numbers here, if that's in the warrant for maintenance and then... Or, you know, I mean, it could be for any type of maintenance. Be for any maintenance in here. You know, a small maintenance to a large maintenance. It doesn't matter. You know, it's not just for large items. It's gonna be for everything that's needed. Then we fit one warrant article in front for that. Since we're already having a maintenance warrant article in there. This is where I'm... This is why I'm just, again... Is it right or wrong? I don't know exactly, but I'm just thinking about how we can get it to get across and still...
Said you're putting forth two. What are the two?
Well, I'm not saying. I'm saying like if we just took the 2,406 and wrote a warrant article for this year. And then we had the other big warrant article, which is gonna be for major repairs. Why can't we use some of the big warrant article or make it a little bit bigger? But again, and offset money out of there for the general maintenances that we're talking in these buildings here.
So for this, this particular budget, the town hall and other buildings with 11 and a half months expended, according to this report, we have $30,000 in there. Just take the $10,000 out for the maintenance person. Focus on what you've got to work with, with the 40,000.
Okay, see, there's... I forget. That was one of the ones we discussed, but that's 10 right there.
Reduce 126 to...
Reduce 126.
To zero.
Or a dollar.
Or a dollar, right.
Is it after three years if it's zero?
I don't know who actually tracks that, but... And again, I'll go through the electric and the heat, see if I can come up with some additional solutions there. We did reduce it some.
Yeah, we did.
I actually, we didn't. It was... The net difference was zero. It was just moving it from one line item to the next.
We'll be meeting on Wednesday the 17th, right?
Wednesday the 13th.
Sorry. This is Wednesday. Put on the date close, right?
Yes.
That will be probably another three-hour meeting. Because that's gonna be focused only on this.
Right.
You know? Uh, because if we want to stick to the time schedule of nine o'clock, these next three departments that, I mean, we're all gonna have to talk about. I mean, the nitty gritty on fire, the nitty gritty on police, you know, nitty gritty on highway. Uh, I mean, it's open to the public. It's gonna be all there, but that's where we're gonna have to seize that our most expensive... And then we can actually throw a little bit of recycling in there.
We hit the highway pretty hard the last time.
Well, we're gonna go over again this time.
Yeah.
So the next meeting, we're gonna have to talk about warrant articles.
And that's who.
That's what I'm saying.
But I think we have to get through here and say, okay, from here, once we get through this and say, okay, I think we've cut everything we possibly cut. This is the number. Then we have to go look at if we are, you know, what we are possibly, you know, doing for warrant articles on how much expenditure we're putting in, what those warrant articles for, in order to look back at here saying, well, that'll take 50 from here to 80 from here. And so that we can say, okay, this is where we're taking this extra money to reach the four, and this is where we're putting to the warrant article. But I think we do diligence as we have to go through this year and cut all the little hundreds and 500s and everything so that we can reduce the fact that the amount of money we're gonna put and ask the public to vote on for warrant articles. That's how I'm looking at this.
So just so you guys know, we need to cut $333,000 in addition to what we've cut between the last meeting and tonight. $333,000.
And that's not taking into account the revenues.
Correct. Well, then what is that number after the revenues? 300?
280?
What are we at for appropriations? About $333,000?
Yeah.
Over.
So we're at five... So we're at like 5.29, about?
Is it percentage increase?
Yeah, what do you... What do you write for a bottom line figure? With the cuts so far?
Are you going off the operating budget number?
The proposed.
Yeah.
He's been...
Yeah.
Putting them into the lives.
The budget total is $5,377,462. That's what we've got.
After the cuts we just made?
Yes.
But don't you...
And last year's approved operating budget was $4,853,66.
We're gonna have to add back in about 40 grand for FICA. It's missing.
Don't wait for me.
They don't wait for you?
Yes, don't wait for me.
Well, you've got our undivided attention, so...
So also for next week because we had some offsetting revenue. So we had moved some things within the rec department. We had moved stuff that was originally paid out of the rec revolving fund. So we need to show that as an offsetting revenue as well. So I really need to fine tune the revenues before we can figure out...
Yeah, because again, I mean, the rec's asking us to change their... Our pay schedule, how they were doing that.
Mike, we have to go back to paying part of that salary out of the rec revolving.
Well, I think what we have to do is instead of assuming... It probably should be in the operating budget so you have a better idea of what it costs to run the department, but we need to show some of those rec revolving fees coming back in as an offsetting revenue. So that's what I'm saying. Instead of like the 2.55 million estimate that I just threw out there for a revenue, we probably need to throw another $100,000 at that figure to come in from rec revolving fees. So it'd be 2.65. Know what I'm saying? So for the additional expense, we're showing the revenue offsetting in on the other side.
Yeah, I don't... We didn't tell you to have all this tonight, so I don't... It's not...
Don't forget the $1,000.
Exactly.
So again...
We can't forget about that.
All right, well... It's not anybody's... This is a impromptu kind of just for us to...
The next two are fairly large, so we're gonna hold those off until the 13th.
With the tentative reductions that you've made, I'll get together with him because he's doing it live. Make sure that we're both on the same page, and I will send you off another spreadsheet. Updated with these changes. And I can give you the revenues.
And you get a non-public?
Okay, yes.
One's legal.
ABL.
ABL. I make a motion that we move to non-public for RSA 91-A:32A-BL.
Second.
Motion made by Tim DeBrio, seconded by Steve Welch. Roll call.
Hi, Steve Welch.
Hi, John Bourne.
I've been Barlet.
I, Tim DeBrio.
We'll be automatically recessing... Adjourning the meeting after...
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Nottingham. Have a good night.